This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so we will call to order the Monterey Select Board on November 21st at 6:03 PM. We have all three members present here in Town Hall. And the first item of business is the Human Resources Consulting Scope of Services. I have not had a good chance today to look over it in much detail, but...
I picked up a couple of things. Drive door action. So, some are small. The first one that like a word missing here and there, like I'll send them to Melissa. But the big one that worries me is that she pulled complaints of discrimination, sexual assault, and level harassment. And there's no, I did not see any added language that would include harassment issues. And I, I don't, maybe we don't need it, but I think since that was a concern we had, we wanted to make sure we had backup for that. I flagged it.
For some reason, okay, I'm seeing it's number six.
Yes, it's number six. And there's a numbering thing that happened because it was in different groups and whatever. There's a few things like that which I think are easy to fix. I trust Melissa can do that, but I, that one I thought was worth.
Yeah, I mean, I think the first thing to do would just be ask her, why did you do that? Are you willing, are you willing to investigate some? You just didn't want to say necessarily all, or what's going on here?
Yeah. That was the only big one that I flagged. Let me just, there's so much stuff on here. The others were all just like a comma or word left, she left out the word consultant or she deleted director and so on. I mean, not big things. That was the only big one.
Yeah, and but that is a good thing that we need to take care of from there and other.
Everything else, I think, is fine. She also pulled exit interviews and separation services. That does seem like we don't necessarily need them to perform that, but that would be...
Do we want the option?
That, that's one I'm with. Like another thing to ask her, like what, like what service does she believe they could perform in this regard? There may be a reason that she omitted it, but...
Yeah, but usually you have a standard set of questions, so you're consistent on doing it. If we put the questions together, then we'll, you know, it's just an matter of pain or the time to do it.
Yeah, but I'm curious why they didn't want to do it. There might be a reason, but we should ask. So that's two, exit interviews and harassment grievances. And I use that broadly to include me in there. Did you catch anything? No, I was a little surprised that all she took out.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I do, I get the sense that's going on here. And based on the initial proposal, I didn't really read into it this far. But they want to offer a consulting service, so we come to them and we say, we want you to review the handbook, or we want you to help with job posting, we want your advice on this. But they're not going to take ownership and accountability at the end of the day for the success of our human resources.
Right.
They're just going to advise. It's like town council.
Yeah.
We can ask town council, what do you think we should do? And they should, they can say, well, you should do X. We can do Y. And it might be no, they might, it might not bother them at all. Like they're, and that's the sense I get, is they want to be more of a consultant.
Yep.
And they don't want to take ownership at the end of the day for making sure that things get done, but just give advice. Which is fine. I do see a title here.
Which one?
In supervision received bottom, council.
And council is missing. I was in other one I know.
But yeah, we'll reach out to her on those three. Melissa, can you please just ask her, you know, for the most part, we're fine with all the changes, other than just curious why we, why we removed number six? And then the other couple of things that Susan mentioned. Yeah, it was like this investigative complaints of, and then...
Exit interviews, harassment, complaints. And yeah, exit interviews and separation harassment complaints were the two bigger issues than the rest of them. Was there a third?
Well, I just had medias between employees prepares performance improvement plans and prepares disciplinary marks as requested by the SBNT. I mean, maybe my senses from a restless document, what they would do. Oh, may advise the town in preparing such, so the health, the town administrator, the select board.
And then eight on the third page kind of addresses a little bit, renumbered eight.
Yeah.
Right.
So they're just going to advise and assess and not, not to take ownership over. So it's really just the perform exit interviews paragraph and investigates all complaints paragraph.
And like they may feel that the grievances covers the harassment in A, you know, the grievance is listed in A. But I think that harassment complaints go to a different level.
Because harassment can usually turn up legally.
And it might be that they're like, that's a legal issue. But you usually have to begin the process by having conversations with the people, like it obviously would depend who's involved.
Right.
And we have something to kind of handle because we had set up at least the sexual harassment policy. And the whole gist of the policy was if anyone in the whole organization has any issues, they go straight to the, at the time, the Human Resources Director, who then is the point person.
Right.
And...
So now we have to create a different...
Now we have to create a different structure because we need to have that person that we can refer everyone to for those kinds of issues. I thought the HR Director was kind of a very natural fit.
Oh, it was.
But...
It definitely was, but if we don't have one.
Change course.
Yeah.
But we'll probably get insight, you know, based on asking these questions without them reporting them, and they'll probably be willing to advise them.
Speaking of what's like grievance, we talked to him when we did interviews, we talked about having a separate phone line for them to respond to. If someone wanted to call the Human Resource Director.
Well, we, we did have a cell phone for Sophia that was split between five towns, but I mean Monterey was the host for the phone.
We transferred it over to Barrington.
All right. It probably doesn't make sense, well, there's a couple of things going on in this. First and foremost, if they don't want to be the point person for issues like that, then we're not going to send people their way with complaints.
But then we have to designate another person.
Yeah. And then secondly, I think they have a phone. I mean, like I said, she was very available last week. So we would probably just use her, her phone, I would imagine, but she would get enough in the town.
But we do need to raise the question.
How does this work? I mean, we can't be the first one to ask it.
Okay, all right, Melissa, we'll spend those questions. Thank you, Melissa.
And I will, I will forward you this so you can see what my textual ones and the numbering is.
So it became clear that I also wasn't going to have time this week to mess around with the formatting stuff. Because, and actually this just seemed like a better way to do it, is I just wrote up my proposed changes, some of which I'm not certain of exactly, but I wanted to run them by you. So one thing I would do is town council doesn't show up on here, I would insert them under the select board, not change, and that might be confusing. I would change HR Director to HR Human Resources Consultant. Because that's just the way that seems. Then, this is just my two cents, but I wanted some consistency within the elected positions to where the Board of Assessors appoints the principal assessor and the assessor's clerk and the library trustees, the library staff and the Board of Health, I believe, the health agent. I would either spell them all out or not spell any of them out, but I can work on that. And then there will be others, like Parks Commission hires a beach monitor. We won't always catch everyone. But I wanted to lay it out because to me, if, if I was a resident or someone new to the organization, I might be a little bit confused by that. By the fact that some are spelled out and some aren't.
The only I'm going to say is, there's no way if you have that, all of those listed, it's going to go on the page in type that anyone besides a ten, you know, a ten-year-old with good vision can't read.
Well, I don't, it wouldn't change a whole heck of a lot because it would just be like, so the other Board of Assessors.
Yeah, yeah.
It would just be, the only other ones that I can think of, and anyone correct me if I'm wrong, the only other regular recurring appointments that are really made by elected positions that are not the beach monitor, which is a brand new position, would be the fact that the library Board of Trustees hires the library staff and the Board of Health, I believe, hires the health agent. Those are positions of, of, you know, some weightiness. Well, that's, that would be down as a point.
Okay.
But like by law review, obviously no one, TBA cemetery, I mean, some of these might have a very part-time clerk. Depend, because some of these set up a minute taker for the finance committee, they used to have their own line, or at least planning board used to have their own line, but that's kind of obvious. I just wanted to make that consistent, one way or the other.
I'm fine with it.
Or not list any of them, but just with consistency. Another one I was going to add, and I know we're going to discuss this later, was just the IT service provider, whoever that ended up being or whatever the situation may be. I would add, even though they're not an employee, in the same way the treasurer accountant, town council, HR consultant, they're not employees. But I think they could fit on here, I think. There's a couple of changes just related to, and I don't know if they ever heard back on that bylaw. Did Chris ever?
The building inspector thing?
Yeah, the building department.
Yep.
That we passed in May?
Oh, no, I just sent them a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
To the agent, yeah.
Yeah. So we haven't technically heard, but that would be just another thing.
Oh, you mean the one from May?
Yeah.
Yeah, no. It's usually April. That was just in 98's. Wow, okay.
And doing the long-term goals and priorities, so it's true, how you realize. There's a number of bylaws I wanted to pose, but if we're doing the bylaw review proposal, we're going to need to wait, we're going to need to actually do that, which is a big ordeal, and then we're going to need to wait. I think we would really wait till it's approved before we start adding other stuff in because that could, I would imagine that's going to take...
Because even numbering them becomes an issue?
Well, no, so not really. Donna suggested after last year's annual town meeting, there's a bylaw that you can make that just says the town clerk can renumber the bylaws in a way that makes sense.
Okay.
That, because what happens is towns delete bylaws or add them, and the numbering and formatting gets weird. And so there's a bylaw that you can adapt that just says the, that's one of the bylaws.
Because really, the text of the bylaws what matters, the number of the bylaws is just for convenience and reference. It's not really a, but shouldn't be weighty. I agree with that.
Well, if it was done well though, Susan, like section one would lay out all the positions and boards. And section two would discuss roads or something. And then the numbering could help people act and the organization could help access more easily.
But that presumes that when you initially make it, you're going to be able to predict all the categories of bylaws you made at some point.
No.
That's not necessarily the case. So being able to renumber them makes sense because inevitably something's going to get pulled out of the middle or something's going to get added that no one predicted.
Yeah.
So better to be able to renumber it because fundamentally the numbers are only for reference. It's the content that matters.
Yeah.
It's like, you can change the index if you're not changing the content without changing.
Well, and I support it.
Yeah.
The only hangup is, we don't really want to add that to the bylaws until we do the whole bylaw overhaul. And then, like I was saying, if we do, let's say we do the bylaw overhaul in February, that would be great. By May.
We're not going to have it again.
We haven't, we haven't had it approved, so we can't go meet anyway.
There's just argues again for doing the fall meeting for the changes like that, so it's not like, I know it's on there. There you go. I, I, I know it's on there.
The, just the community center admin staff to community center director. And then again, listing, which I don't really think takes up all that, it's going to take up that much more space.
Yeah.
The only hangup would be, oh, I added council on aging outreach worker. The only hangup would be if we had, I know that the council on aging and the community center committee do some oversight each of their respective employee, and Melissa does as well. So I don't know if it's worth having some kind of a dotted line connecting them. Because I, you know, I do think it matters, but it...
Has there, I mean, so like in, in reality, imagine a scenario where there was conflict because the overseeing body, I'm going to call it the CONCOM, and the town administrator didn't agree on the performance of the conservation provision agent. So my knowledge that, that isn't true, but it's, it's an imaginable scenario. The question would be, what would we do?
What?
I mean, and we don't know the specifics because it's an imaginary scenario, but which, which one gets to, do we, like, that's what I'm saying. If we're giving two lines of authority, if those lines of authority come into conflict, then I guess it comes to the select board to decide.
Yeah. I think that's why you do a dotted line, to show that, you know, they're going to receive some guidance, some input from the committee. But I think in the job description, I mean, we'd have to look at the job descriptions, but I think the job description say the town administrator is the direct supervisor. But if we can do it in a tasteful, clear way
Right.
with a dotted line, maybe that's just more accurate to the situation. It's hard, I mean, the more you think about these things, the harder it is to really nail it down. Because there are, these lines and boxes don't really give the full, I mean, because some of these, like treasurer and accountant are consultants, are consultants with whom we have contracts. So they're dealt with in an entirely different way from the director of operations.
Me, and, and then if, you know, the reality is, human interactions are very difficult to codify and often the complexity of a real organization is way beyond any organizational chart. If you consider, not only do we have contracts with them, because they're not employees, but where are you going to delineate? Are you going to delineate who has the most frequent contact with them or who, hey, or who's, I mean, ultimately, we're the contracting authority?
I think, no, so I, I think, like I'm saying, let's not get too into the weeds or coming up on...
Don't be so surprised, don't be surprised that no document you produce will actually encompass the complexity of the reality. Because I don't think it's possible to do so. All you can do is provide a guideline. That's all I was saying. I'm actually supporting what you were suggesting and just saying, that comes with the territory. It's a reality. The document can never encompass that.
Yeah. That being said, if these were okay.
I'm fine.
I'm fine with my own development.
Then I would either, Melissa, do you think that you can work it in Word because I'm just not capable?
It's a work of PowerPoint.
This is Word. I don't, I don't think I have PowerPoint as part of our package.
Because I don't, because I don't own an office package.
Yeah, for some reason every time I open it, it says it needs a repair or something.
So my laptop I've had since 2016, I think since the day I've had it, every time I open it, it says I need a software. And I just delay it.
Oh, yeah.
I just have to ensure it's not security issue.
I don't have stuff properly backed up either.
I mean, you just never know what's going to hit you back. I went to pay a bill, a bill that I pay every month, very, like a pretty hard bill. And it wouldn't load, and I thought it was, like, the site wouldn't load. I thought, oh, well, it's a temporary thing. You know, turns out, even though I've been loading Firefox for ages, it no longer supports Firefox, so I had to boot it in a different browser. Which should do an obvious, but wasn't. I ended up calling tech support and the minute I called and talked, finally got a person, I was like, oh, I should have just done this. Thanks, sorry, bye. I mean, he didn't even suggest it. I realized it, just because I was talking to him.
By the time I'm calling tech support or on those online chat things, if I went back in hindsight, 90% of the time the issue does, that's all, not work.
Fortunately, I was able to do it myself, so. What's next?
Bunch of appointments, or a few appointments, which is good. So I believe this first one's one year or the sixth month.
One-year probation. And if you do it for start date of 11/26. She's got it. Okay, I move that we appoint Melanie Sararo as a full-time police officer effective November 26th. A one-year appointment with a one-year probation.
Second, any other discussion on that? Do we call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, unanimous approval. That's great. So the next couple, what have we been doing? Have we been lining? I'm sure the community center committee is with the fiscal year. I'm not sure about the open space and recreation plan.
Yeah, well, open space has to be done by 6:30, so it'll just be two, it's a children's agenda.
Because of the grant or what?
Although, I guess we're the planning committee, you have to have an open space committee once you have a plan.
So is this like the master plan and the planning board?
Yes. You're supposed to, you know, yeah, whatever. I, I think that the bigger one would be, the bigger issue would be if we do pass the Community CPA.
Community Preservation.
Preservation Act. That requires outstanding.
To administer. Yes. I, yeah, I'd actually like to talk about that.
But it's like, great honor. It's on our agenda, but anyway, sir, so do we want to do my curable first though?
Yeah, but I think we'll do that through June 30th as well.
Okay. All right, I, I don't, I don't...
Okay, I'll move to a point, Mike Zerbal, to the Monterey Community Center Committee through June 30th, 2023. 2024. The years have flown by.
Way too good to be mine.
Yeah, no kidding. What year is it again?
A second motion.
All right, we'll vote.
Yes.
Yes, that's unanimous approval of appointment. Thank you, Mike.
I will move to appoint Mark Andrews to the Monterey Community Center, oh, the Monterey Community Center Committee to the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee effective immediately through June 30th.
2024. We'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so that's unanimous approval. Thank you, Mark.
So our current IT person has informed me that I'm getting ready for IT, let's, let's, and get him ready.
You're the only ones here.
Well, is it still snowing?
Oh, yeah, it's starting to stick.
Yeah, that, well, you know, we're just such a happening crowd that like the room is packed. Standing ovation.
Yeah, well, maybe get more done this way.
Let's have luck with that. Okay, what's up with that? As he's been working with his retirement advisors, they advised him that he is heavily exposed liability-wise. So he's asking the town for a release from any and all liability between now and December 31st. So that's going to be his last day now, December 31st. If you're not comfortable with that, he's resigning immediately.
Okay, I mean, do you have a paperwork to rush aside?
No, I was just, this was just me. I wanted to make sure I got it right, what he said.
Okay, yeah, and just so people know, I mean, it might be tangentially related to, there were document requests related to the Walker lawsuit and our attorney followed up about additional documents more recently. And so I had to involve Tom to pull emails from, in one case, an old email account and in one case, an ongoing email account. So it was just Terry at Monterey M and Clark at Monterey M. So I, that happened recently, so I don't know if that's related to...
Could be.
Because I just got an email from David Lawless and we, I had kind of coordinated that the first go-around. Not, I didn't do anything other than email everyone reminders. Anyways, just so you know, because I, I didn't know that's what's happening, but now that it is, maybe two and two together, I wouldn't be surprised. So that being said, I mean, does he have paperwork? If, if he wants to do this, would we have paperwork for like those?
Like to release him of liability.
Yeah.
He didn't provide me with anything. I'm going to have to reach out to Donna and see if she...
Yeah, I would reach out to Donna and that kind of thing.
I mean, you're willing to do it.
Well, I thought he, I almost thought his, if he's getting advice that his...
It was from his financial advisor, so I think they're looking at like his retirement funds.
Ten to open, like he can't do his retirement funds.
If someone sued him.
Yeah.
Perhaps we could tell him we're, we're willing in principle and we're reaching out to councils to get some language. I mean, you know, we're talking about a month. So by the time we get it back from council, it'll probably be a done deal, but...
Well, I also don't know the general kind of indemnification clause.
That's carried by...
I, I don't know in our insurance and whatnot. I don't know how that all interacts and understand why he's saying, what he's saying. That being said, I mean, yeah, Donna recommends it and there's something we can do to, to make it mature. That being said, do we have any progress on a new IT service provider?
Sounds like it's going to go kick into gear.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I'm going to two thirty next Monday afternoon. Well, we have, Roger wrote a set of questions to the one, 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 right, here.
Really, yep.
Yeah, while, in time to get it. He's listed under the state municipality contract, so we wouldn't have to put it out to bid. So Roger's wrote an email and I will have to put it on the burner to do, start doing it.
Would we usually have to put it out to bid? Do you know, Melissa?
Well, depending on cause, I mean, this cost, yes.
Wally, it's not example like town council or something?
Yeah, no.
Or...
Well, because it's going to include hardware and such.
Yeah, it's not going to be cheap. We won't wreck your holidays, I suppose. But it's not, it, it, you know, there's a couple, I don't know how technical you want me to get, but it's, it's just not cheap. I don't know how to get around it.
Well, one sense that I had from the interviews and proposals, which was a few months ago, was just that John Shannon had worked with budgets more similar to one we've been running on. At the end of the day, I want to do what's right. We can't risk a cyber attack, but...
You can't risk a cyber attack and the other issue is that, you know, how do you keep it after you get it installed? How do you keep the security updates and all the things that go with it to keep it? Because what might be good the day we put it in and a year from now, if some, you know, there'll be some other kind of person. So we're looking at actually having them host everything. We just have a direct line to the provider. They have all the firewall there. You know, we're looking more at the cloud because like with Mari and not bringing it in-house because you get the SQL database. It's more to upgrade it.
It sounds like the assessors are kind of going the same way.
Yeah, and so if that's the way we're doing, you know, Roger, who did this, I need him, and he knows a lot more than me. He's pointing us that way, that makes sure that we're getting network security, everything's checked before it comes into the building. And, you know, it's more, you know, I don't know how to say it's more expensive. It's expensive. I don't know how to compare after you get all the security things because like Roger... security things, because like Roger pointed out, you have to do some things with the department highway, because you just can't have an open circuit there where they can go there, you know? There's just all these little kind of questions that I didn't know about and Roger's been identified. He wrote Wally a pretty good long email about all the different questions about his proposal. And we'll have to get that going, that'll be a priority. So we'll drive in the next couple of weeks, get some underfired up so we can start.
Are you only pursuing Wally at this point?
Well, we're, we're trying to, what we're trying to do is get a clear view, get a better understanding of what we want. And Wally's provided the most information, so we could get that. Then we could duplicate what we're asking for. You know, instead of saying, you know, I want pepperoni pizza here, but I want cheese here. We want a price for both pepperonis, you know, from either places.
Yeah.
Because it gets too, too hard to compare. And you know what, Roger's done a really good job, you know, he's probably meeting back a couple times, keeping up the dating stuff. So we do, you know, two thirty, two o'clock next month. And I'll pull all the paperwork up. We had a proposal in that and talked a little bit when we met with Mari. And then we can reach out to Mari to get that final number, so we can have a whole list. We got the order of assessors information, you know, say, look, this is what we're looking at.
Also, when you're looking for prices, CM Geeks was just a company that Maya mentioned towns use. So they might.
CM, correct?
C M and then geeks.
Geeks, yeah.
I just, whenever we were discussing multi-factor authentication and whatnot, we, they just mentioned as a name, so I figured might as well.
But it does seem like, once you get a sort of clear picture from Wally, that it makes sense as soon as possible to reach out to any other vendor we're considering, because we're on a time line here.
Yeah, Melissa and Roger have been going, I don't know, but in the municipality, who's on the state list.
Right.
So we're not redefining.
I'm guessing realistically, Wally's quote is gonna be roughly the same as anybody else's on the state list as well.
Uh, okay.
But we'll happily give the specs to the other thing.
But if Maya's recommending it, I'm guessing that they must have.
Well, Maya didn't recommend.
They threw the name out of someone.
I think Melissa said, or I, someone said something that we're looking for a new provider and said, do you have any people that you know? I think they said something like, we know towns that use CM geeks.
Oh, okay.
But maybe, yeah, sorry if there's any.
No, no, that's okay. All right.
But then, I mean, also if there's a state list, we can just.
There's providers, you know, it wasn't, you know, Melissa and Roger say.
Just prepare yourself, because the difference is dramatically different than what we got in the first two.
It was different, but I.
Different as per due.
It's dramatically different, but it can be a long-term solution. Rechange and stuff like that, you know that you have the security there and you know that you're protected. Oh, you know, we'll, we'll get more information.
Okay, yeah, Melissa will follow up with Donna and Tom and Frank and Melissa and Roger will get a move on. On the quotes. Long-term goals and priorities, so list that we've been working on. I had highlighted in green, things that we had completed. And then my preference on list is to actually delete things that are completed. Well, no, I didn't.
Oh, 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 I was going to.
I know people.
When I brought it up, I didn't like it.
I was like, I was like, I looked worse than him. I needed to print it up.
No, no, this is what happens. Some people, because I disagreed with people, and some people say, oh, I want my checklist to have much of the things checked off, so I know I did it. And I'm more, if I did something, delete it.
Yeah, I, I, I like to fix with the size.
So.
And get it down to one page.
That being said, most everything on here are ongoing projects or products that haven't started or.
The only question I have, why have we not finally saved my handbook?
Well, I was reading through it today. I think we're close. I had some questions, suggestions. I didn't know if he wanted me to put it in edit mode or not.
Um, I.
You listed some things on the handbook, like payroll, town vehicles.
Well, I did, I did my review of it.
This one incorporates everybody's changes.
I haven't had a final review of it. I mean, it's a fair, fair point.
The other thing I was gonna throw on the desk is there are armed, we'll have to bring a weapon.
So we looked into that when Sophia and I were talking about it and we decided not to, just because of, there, there's something vague she put in there, but because you have the police department in here and I'm aware that several of the highway guys eat guns in their cars.
That's fine. Yeah, but I would, I mean, we have the same thing, you know, you can't bring them into a government building. If you bring them on the property, you have to be locked in with you.
Maybe, I never thought about it and I've never heard about it till this moment, but I am thinking, God forbid, someone does have a firearm in a vehicle, unlocked vehicle, because some of us leave our vehicles unlocked.
So yours is listed out.
And a kid breaks in and uses it, or someone breaks in and uses it, and they were an employee on town time parked in a, I just don't know how it would go. And so maybe it is worth saying, specifying things. Maybe we can't and shouldn't prevent people from.
But there's.
Having a firearm, but.
There are Massachusetts laws about carrying the firearm. So if a employee is carrying a firearm, he has to have a certificate. He has to, you know, I talked to Brian to get mine today. You have to go through training.
You're talking about handgun?
Any gun.
You have to have a license to carry.
You have to have the license to carry, so, you know, you could put it somewhere, you know, you have to be filed in Massachusetts.
All Massachusetts.
Just to stay lost.
And also, it's not, I don't think it's a big deal to go with the police.
I mean.
Yeah, because you could say to Brian, like, the police could be exempt unless, you know, other than those who are carrying, other than police, police officers are carrying their, who have their weapons and to fulfill their duties or something. Like, there, there's no one else besides the police are carrying weapons here to fulfill their duties.
So, yeah, so, so.
They're for the town. They're for the town, so.
I'm very hostile sometimes.
So I think in general, I think in general, what's gonna happen is, and we run everything by council, because we are not going to get into a lawsuit over depriving someone of their right to carry. But in general.
They have to protect, there's always.
Well, I think in general, the policy is going to be things like, if you're gonna have a firearm, you know, while you're at work or whatnot, it has to be legally. And I'm sure the police department follows the laws about police firearms and protocols about police firearms. But it could also say, you know, on-duty police officers also need to abide by the firearms laws. I don't think it's worth holding up, approving the whole handbook over that, but we could certainly think about adding it. That being said, Susan.
Yeah.
Should.
Can we put it on a.
Should our new human resource consultant?
No, we're like, we've already had it looked at and looked at. We had council look at it. We've looked at it. This is, we've been doing this since I was elected.
I'm just saying, because we are, we just.
You can get a second term on it.
No, please, let's just put this to bed. Even if it needs, like, if it needs a new piece, it needs a new piece and we amend it. But let's just put it to bed. It's like this close. Put it to bed. I, I, otherwise it's another six months and that's crazy. We should just have it. I, I'd like to see it on, like, let's put it, like, this, the next, a week in December. Like, how long do we need to get from, to reread it one last time, so we can just say, put it on agenda in December, get it done. All right. Policies for approval. Payroll policy. What is it? What is the purpose of the payroll policy?
Clarify how payroll works and what happens if an issue comes up.
Okay.
That is waiting on Sheila. I had two sets of questions out to Sheila from Berkshire County Retirement. Her counsel went on an inconveniently timed vacation and then took a long time to get back to me. And then she did get back on one set of questions, but kind of inconclusively. Which the one set of questions was whether Sarah Hunter, Massmunifin, can go to the Berkshire County Retirement meetings and represent Monterrey as a point of trust.
I remember that.
The other set of questions was things like, what's the difference between a salary and a stipend as far as Berkshire County Retirement is concerned? I don't know if she forgot about that list or what, but I had sent her a follow-up email a couple of weeks ago and said, do you have any updates on my questions that I asked you? And she just more recently got back on one set of questions and didn't get back any others, so I need to follow up. I think at the end of the day, the payroll policy is going to require many employees to track time and attendance with the, with the feature on the web software. I don't think that this select board is gonna ask select board members to track time and attendance or the tree warden. And so all I'm waiting to hear back is some more clarity from Sheila. And then we can go from there to say something like, all employees except those receiving a stipend, you know, show volume of hours, but to know what that language needs to be like, I need clarity from her on what is a salary versus stipend, because there are remaining questions. Because like, for instance, select board members could, at the rate that we're being, our stipend is over five thousand dollars per year, could sign up for Berkshire County Retirement. So anyways, that's why.
They're two dollars and no.
That's why we have it and that's a hook to it. That's a hook.
Unless you have to stay on it for a time. That, yeah.
Well, we encourage people to do.
Run for life.
We're having the HR IMA meeting on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Okay. About that, I have to remember that, right, yeah. All right, so that explains payroll policy with a good update. What, talk to me about the town, the town vehicle use policy came up with regard to both Jim and Chief Police, correct?
Well, I think it was more, more widespread. I mean, there hasn't been an issue per se.
No, no, those were the only two times I remember us talking about it.
Well, there was one time about police officers taking the police cruiser to training and could the town ask them to take a personal vehicle to training.
Okay, that's.
That being said, I thought, I think that was something that Frank had.
Well, I did some looking. I have a look now, but I haven't finished the handbook. We have a vehicle policy. We have one for the town. And the most towns, not most towns, like you can go on some, they just have this policy. You use it for personal business, you don't use it for personal use. Other people can't drive it.
Right.
It's pretty straightforward. It's one of those things that's just written out. It's common sense, dog.
But you still need to say it.
You have to say it, because then you can't.
I think that there is something in the handbook.
Well, there's something in the handbook. If you have an accident with a town vehicle and the car has to be towed, you get a kind of alcohol, some kind of drug.
That's right.
If it's not, it doesn't have to be towed, or if it's not your fault, you know, suppose someone runs into you.
Someone runs a red light, not our fault.
There's no red light. But, but, you know, then you don't, but the policy, you know, you know, it's usually a paragraph with a few, few bullet points. Personal business, can't let other people drive it.
So you wanna.
I could do that.
Yeah. Recruitment policy?
Recommended potentially by Sophia, the last HR director. We don't necessarily need to do it.
Well, that's why.
That's why, that's guessing that you're talking about like very pathogenically.
This was Sophia mentioned, something like, I forget what particular, I think it was when we were hiring the new community center director. And we discussed, so you would just lay out, this is how recruitment works, more or less, and there may be exceptions, but this is the policy. When there's a vacancy, this is how it's handled, X, Y, and Z. This is where it's posted. This is how, you know, who's the interview committee? We don't need to do it. It gives us more flexibility now. So it was something that Sophia had potentially recommended.
Exactly. If you think about what you just said and how we, the time and fact that transfers, whenever you can, you know, department works. You know, and you're, we have to post it and do everything it could have time to do.
Well, if we had.
We want that freedom to do what we, you know.
I'd go with freedom personally, but I, I mean.
Then strike it. I mean, I, it's, there's a question mark.
I don't think anybody here is sold on it.
Strike it.
No, strike it.
Well, we don't, by the way, I didn't.
You're like, we're gonna go through it.
Yeah, I, 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 I think more if you have questions or anything more.
I have a couple of things that I thought of. So I wasn't sure where to put this one, but I put it under HR. So I think we really have to work on coming up with more ConCon agents. It's critical, like, you know, all of that are with them. They're overwhelmed. They work really hard at it and like, you know, a lot of other towns have like seven in my members. And we've got three in. They've had to not meet because they didn't have quorum, like, it's an issue. So I, I don't know what to do about it, right? I, I don't know how we're gonna recruit, but we can't, if they all quit, it's us. Right? Because the state requires that we do this, so. And.
Well, it might be the, the state's fault for having an unfunded, unenforced mandate, that they're requesting localities to enforce, which is a very peculiar situation.
We can argue about that all we like, but in, at the end of the day, we're the ones that are missing in those meetings if we don't do something to find more members for the ConCon. So I, I'm just putting it out there that it's kind of critical. And I, I know, I, everyone that I could think of that might be a possible candidate, I've talked to. I think you probably have to.
Do you know how, do you know the story behind how Mark Andrews first got involved in the community center committee?
No.
I asked him to be on the conservation commission. You know how Kevin Watts got involved in the tree ward position?
I ask pretty much everybody that comes in here, like, if there's any interest.
Do you know how Kevin Watts got involved, or part of the reason he got involved in the tree ward position? I asked him.
It's not like you're not trying, was my point. I, I was not suggesting we weren't trying. What I was saying is, it's still a critical need and I don't have any great ideas about how to pull that need.
I don't, don't, because you're talking about it, same. You'd be lonely at three members, you'd be on.
But we're supposed to have more. We always did have more, but seven. And, and other towns do and we don't. We're supposed to have them. We just don't, because there's no one that's willing to serve. And let's just say I recently got my ears boxed for our turning down that we wouldn't accept someone from out of town when there's no one from town willing to serve. And it's kind of fair, because the people that are carrying the torch have very tired arms. And we just told them, well, we're not willing to take your actually very qualified person, because they don't live in town, even though we don't have any alternatives. And I'm just saying, we might need to revisit the fact that, yes, we'd like to have viable candidates, but we don't. And even if we did, we're not gonna get the seven, so if we find a candidate, they'd be happy for that one too, I expect. So I, I'm, I'm just bringing it to us because I, I do see the need and I'm concerned that we, you know, that we're not meeting it and I don't know what to do about it. So, and I totally wasn't blaming you and you found, you recruited some great people, but what do we do? So I just wanted to put that on our list of things we need to do.
Well, the select board could serve, but my turn's almost up.
Sorry, you don't say characters, it won't be helped.
I'll work over here.
No, I'm just saying, I, I don't know. We've been dealing with this for years.
I know.
I think I do have later on paying, paying or stipend for conservation commissioners, which is one of the things that we said that we would do.
I'm not convinced that that will make a substantive difference, but I don't think it could.
Okay, oh, I got it.
Okay. Another thought I, thing I came up with is that we, you know, we started the payroll system and you can totally shoot me down on this, it's just a thought I had. And I wouldn't mind at this point getting, if Melissa would be willing to produce some kind of a report on how the payroll system has worked. how the payroll system has worked, the difficulties you've encountered, um, the resolutions and whatever's still underway as we proceed, just to have a sort of documentation of how it went. I know it's a pain at this time of year going into budget season.
I'd say as long as you're not expecting it to like generate.
February maybe. But yeah, no, you know, there's other priorities, but I think that ultimately it would be good to have, um, something in writing that reflects on how it went and what might, we might still need to work on. It might give us an opportunity to work out any remaining things, although sometimes those systems, you never get them all out. Especially, we have such a a diverse array of needs in the various departments. I've tried to figure out the best way to say it. I wanted to put a pitch in, in financial. I think we should, and I, I think to some degree they do this, but I wanna encourage all departments to include maintenance, not just of existing equipment, but also buildings and bridges. So I know parks has put in some things and now they're gonna have to have it in their budget, maintain it. Like if you build a trail, you have to maintain it or degrade it, right? Just like any other piece of equipment. Um, and I think we've, as a town, been pretty good about maintaining our stuff. But it's something that you have to do consistently. So, and, and we're trying to catch up like on this building. So I think we should, if everyone's consistent, all departments are consistent about, okay, what are we gonna need to not just maintain our trucks, but maintain the parks or the trail we just built or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I think as far as capital purchases go and our capital planning policy, we specifically say that. Right? I guess if we could remind, it means when, when we're doing budget requests, but it's really only as far as, it only really affects capital purchases, right?
And some of the things, I think it, it might be existing things that we have. So, or something that we, the new trail would be a good example of it, or the new playground, it was a capital purchase, but the trail was sort of done in this interdisciplinary way and.
The only thing with the trail is, that's not a new trail. It's an old trail.
It is. I didn't realize that. There had been a trail there.
So that's almost maintenance. And then the other thing with the trail is, let's say ten years down the road, fifteen years down the road, no one came through with a chainsaw. It just like happened this time. It's not a threat to public safety or anything like that. It's different once you build a building, you need to maintain it to, to protect your, to protect your investment and whatnot. With the trail, you know, if we don't maintain it, it's not the end of the world. It's a nice, it's a nice little trail I've done a couple of times, uh, since it's been done. Anyways.
And it, it might also be that some things don't require a ton of maintenance. Like if you're talking about like, you know, two hours for somebody from DBW to walk the trail and take out, take out, down any hazards and budget for it and only one hour gets used. Oh no. Right? Like, it was just a thought I had and you don't have to say it. Um, I wanted to check in with you on the research potential for affordable housing with construct. Are you?
I'm just waiting to, she had asked me for recently copies of the Septic.
The wonderful construct?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're on it.
Is there any sense of like, this is something that you want to take on or?
She wants to look at the property as viable in her opinion first.
And then they might just turn it down.
Right. She might give you other places to go or look. She didn't want to give me any definitive answers. She wanted to, to check out the property, which I know she, she went up and looked at it, I think last week.
Did she get let in to?
No, no, but she does wanna go in. She just did the outside. I know she, parking is a concern. Rainy act. I think this is for creating one. I don't think she believes me, but.
Well, uh, also does she know, I mean, we're not necessarily asking just turn the property over, but we potentially could fund some funding.
Yes, yes, she's. I don't, I mean, she's doing due diligence.
Yes.
That seems.
And it's the holidays. I just, I just was wanting to know who was the one person, but now I have answers. Um, next one is the one point six acres on River Road. I would like to take that off the seller list. Because I believe having seen a map as I've been facing the other day, I don't think that's the access to this.
It is.
Which to me makes it a treasury resource for the town.
I mean, we had, we, you know what, you could, we could throw it out and make it a park or bona fide park. But they're not adequate parking. The rope swing will need to be cut down multiple times this summer.
Right.
And all kinds of signs that say, swing at your own risk or whatever insurance tells us to do. It could be a bona fide perk. Part of what's happened because it's not an actual park is it's a little bit more off the beaten path.
Which I, I'm not sure is the bad though, because too much traffic would be great.
I was very surprised when the town owned it and I, I, I just.
I thought it was private property.
The thing is, this sell list is um, not anything imminent. I mean, it's a process and it doesn't generate a lot of revenue for the town. And it's confusing to me exactly how it would be, but I mean, that should be maybe not to sell, but do, what are we gonna do with this stuff? So, I think maybe we can change the wording of selling, but at the very least, we should figure out, maybe parks wants to take it on up, you know, but, but, uh.
I mean, I know the last time this came up, the auctioneer said that this won't attract any business unless we're doing the whole of the school at the same time.
So.
Building.
Oh, you mean like having, right, right, right. Cause they, they have to go to auction.
Well, yes, but I did learn and I don't quote me on the details, but we don't necessarily have to hire an auctioneer. We can follow another process wherein we make a very competitive process and post, except, maybe it was accept sealed envelopes, which would mean only one person would need to even put in. That's might be what it is, that we might, that might be allowed to be done. And so in theory, a lot of the sealed envelopes would just come from that butter. But uh, I think we might, if we really wanted to tackle this, we could look into it, but I do remember learning that we might be able to do sealed envelopes, which would change things.
Can you remind me what the point six, seven acres on Main Road and point three eight acres off Eaton Road are?
Off Eaton Road is down by the lake.
Is that the one that has like the old power station thing?
No. Point three acres off Eaton Road was a piece of property that someone kept when they sold the property because I forgot exactly why, but it's kind of down by the lake. And there's, there's at least one butter. So that's the kind of thing that we might essentially try to sell to the others, but there's kind of no sense in the town owning it.
No. I mean, unless it's lake access.
No, no. I mean, it would be for, I for, I don't think it's ripe. I, I, I lost my subscription to my app and that will tell me this. What you said, six, seven acres on Main Road is, so the six point six acres on Main Road is as you go towards Great Barrington before you get to the fields on both sides. It's on the left. On after the last house there.
Okay.
It's kind of a wooded, brushy swampy area between the road and.
How did we get that one?
I don't know. Lakeview Ave is very interesting too. My, if, my memory serves, if you go up Chestnut Hill Road and you were to take a right into a road that doesn't exist, at one point someone had subdivided or divided that property up. And that was one of those properties and Lakeview Ave is not really a road that really exists in Monterey. It's just, was gonna be a road where there were gonna be a few houses. And point six, seven acres on Main Road, I don't know, but I can find out for next meeting. It's a might. Anyways, it doesn't really hurt anyone to own these extreme properties, but they're not on the tax rolls and and I, I like your point about River Road. Maybe make it a park and we could throw that out to the parks commission.
Um, and I'm fine with it being a, a low visibility situation because I think that protects the resource. But, um, I thought you should move by law renumbering up to by law review. Um, I am working on the dark skies bylaws thing. What else? Oh, the streetlights, ask National Grid for help your streetlights under miscellaneous.
Yeah.
I think that Otis sailed. They've already changed the lights.
All the lights?
I believe so. I'm pretty sure they're almost done.
Yeah, but not all across town, just in the center and just in the village?
Uh, I thought it was all of them.
Because there's one over on the way to Otis at the Sharper Corner. That's the, that I thought looks yellow, but.
So I know, is that where the camera is? Cause I know Jim said he needed a different kind of light because of the camera there.
Oh, is that?
So that it wouldn't glare, I think. Cause I think it was, something was happening. He couldn't see it because it was too bright or something.
So did they change it?
I think so. I, I don't have the.
I just noticed. That's the one I drive by the most.
So the only thing we could do at this point would be to ask them for shielding. Which I believe we can do. Do you want to do that?
Well, we could do.
The shielding reduces glare and makes the light point more downward.
I was never, I never really was, uh, I got my hands dirty in this one. But if you wanna do that,
Okay.
that's good. I mean, I think it goes hand in hand with the dark skies bylaw.
Yep. Yeah, I've only got two more, um.
So I'll leave, right now I'll leave streetlights on that, I guess. Or should I just fade it off?
You can, you can leave it on there, um, because if, if nothing else, it'll remind me.
Yeah, I'm not that.
But I'm kind of working on it anyway, so it's just that's it. Um, so one thing I want, well, I'm not gonna read that one. I put this one I will. The, I was reminded about the SBA. I haven't really heard anything from them.
To the version.
Yeah, to any meetings. And I'm just wondering, we have a contract with them now, so they may feel it isn't pressing. But the fair report, but I still don't, like, it's not a terrible amount of money, but I still don't feel like the apportionment is fair.
They just sent their request for this through twenty five. They did not change the assessment method.
Well, I'm sure they didn't.
Cause they don't wish to do.
Seventy?
Seventeen.
Seventy, right.
Did someone?
Right at the same time.
So did someone, um, clarify in a Google group because there was some confusion on there about basic life support and advanced life support?
Someone did, yeah.
Cause Monterey's number one call for BLS or ALS is Southern Berkshire. And in instances where they're not available, we rely on Otis Sandsfield, New Marlborough, but those are all BLS.
Someone said, was I, and I think she said talk to Susan. She knows all about it. That's what.
Oh boy. Well, no one's rung me up yet, so. And just if people are gonna donate, that's good. They should also know that their tax dollars are going.
Right.
To Southern Berkshire.
And someone did say that.
Um, but I just basically, I had a feeling that, you know, this was gonna come back again and there's no incentive for them to change their apportionment and they seem very resistant to it. I don't, I, we don't have a I don't see that we have a, a large amount of political capital to force any change. Certainly not in the interest of Sheffield or Barrington, which have the larger populations to, they're getting a good deal.
So my recollection of last year was that it was really Barrington who wins out with this assessment methodology. And if we were, when we proposed our assessment methodology, it was actually to most towns' benefits other than Barrington, which, so it's really the other towns against Barrington, but Barrington has a lot of money to get Southern Berkshire, even when their assessment is relatively low for poll volume. So is that something that you wanna write up another letter or do we just?
That's basically what I'm saying is like I, 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 I would be willing to try to, to go talk to them again, but I don't think I'll get any traction. I, the only way to do it would be to like try to talk some of the other towns into sitting at the table with the united front. But then we're gonna, I mean realistically, we're gonna get into a catfight with Barrington.
Why, yeah, because you're gonna say reduce mine and I want you guys to pick up, but I don't.
No, because what would happen if we really got them to change and really got people worked around, the other towns would drop too. We're all footing the bill for Great Barrington getting a huge break. But, so you could potentially get some of them united. What would it be? Egremont? All third now.
And the bottom line is that the stick that Barrington has is that we'll find, we'll just run along to the doors. Well, that'll only be one, like, they, they've already got an ambulance, right? So they're using that as well. It just gives us an excuse to pull out, but I'm like, how realistic is that?
For Southern Berkshires.
Yeah, for that ARPA fund.
Yes, Southern Berkshire is one of their new ambulants, but.
Not Barrington.
Yeah.
I, my general sense is generally really in support of Southern Berkshire ambulance. And I'm not opposed, I mean, they just have their new assessment. Uh, could you just please send that to us?
Yes.
And then we can look at it and.
Okay, they just wrote a very short letter.
Yeah, I did.
I'm sure.
Happy holiday.
The one that they're, they, they don't get the funding that they need, that will be, will be extinct. No, it didn't. Oh, yeah, you should. I think it was in the Eagle Bay hedge hazard during.
Okay. Two days ago. Alright, oh, go for it. Anyway, that, that was the last of my.
Yeah.
My hit list.
Yeah, so the, what we get still is good for the price, but I mean, there is a breaking point. There's a, there's a tipping point.
There is, and I mean, we are getting twenty four seven service for that and, you know, I know that the fire, our fire chief would like to trial having an ambulance here.
No, no, he's taking. Not an ambulance.
Not an ambulance.
No.
Just EMS or?
Just, right, this would be a, um, just a staff member that could respond to medical calls until the
ambulance gets there. Gotcha, okay.
Yes, no ambulance.
Gotcha. Um, anyway, I, thank you for the conversation, actually. That, I appreciate it. So I, I don't, I'm not sure how to proceed. It's just, it's frustrating because I don't think we have the, we don't have any teeth to bite that.
Alright. Well.
I just don't, I don't think it's fair. I understand Barrington's argument, but at the end of the day, I think Barrington's argument is because we don't want it.
Well, the fir-, the first thing would be to run our proposed assessment methodology. Um, and then see who wins and who loses and go to the people who would win and see if they would get on board. The other thing to do, if we're willing to compromise, Susan, I don't know how you could do it statistically, cause I'm just not statistically inclined. But what if you ran, essentially ran our assessment methodology, ran the one they're using and somehow split the difference?
I think we even offered something like that and, and.
Well, you did it with distance to town centers, which was a little bit more verging on Monterey as opposed to other towns. But what if you gave, I mean, that would be one thing. What if you gave them a, you split the difference from somewhere in the middle? I mean, the other thing is Great Barrington's looking at the letter that they just received for this fiscal year and they're not gonna wanna up even more, uh, than that, so.
I think fundamentally, that's what we're talking about is that, like, I, I, even the other towns were like, oh, we're, we're just gonna when, when we were all in the table.
It's on the edge, but that's. Southern Berkshire ambulance squad at risk of its own state of emergency.
It's sort of same, same thing from last year.
We don't have the funding, lights go off and even that, that would be the town to currently serve would be catastrophic.
Which is exactly the same message from last year. Like, it's not, it, it's honestly, it's every ambulance squad everywhere. Like, this is a national crisis, right? Like, I, I'm not poo pooing it and I'm not saying they're not delivering service or they're being unreasonable. I think this is a real problem everywhere, not just here.
I think the article says somewhere, it's a really long article, but I believe there are like thirty six thousand involved all right now, so.
And it does raise a question of why they're not like, obviously the reimbursements from insurance are inadequate. Simple pair, but nobody wants to do it. Well, I should say nobody. Anyway, I don't know how to solve this problem. I just, I'm willing to try. I just, I'm willing to try again, I just don't actually think it'll have a different result. Yeah, I have low confidence in it actually achieving. Based on the other towns' sort of reaction of like.
We're just thinking.
A three hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit, right?
Three fifty, not zero.
Beautiful.
I don't remember their financials, I did.
It says that they're, they they go on to say what they asked from the other towns to cover its two point one million dollar projected costs. Board treasurer noted that the organization is currently operating with a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit.
It's gotta be, again, it's gotta be receivable, they're just not getting paid for what they serve.
Yeah.
Cause the other costs are predictable. But I don't know what to do about it and they wouldn't give us this year under court either, so.
We're not gonna do minutes, I get the sense.
I didn't, I just got ours before my computer.
We won't do minutes, which is.
I did have one in anticipated. Uh, so I'd like to do a door decorating contest. What do you guys think of that? It's gonna involve you and I just need your approval, I did check with the accountant, I could do little gift cards, like twenty five dollar gift card or something to the winners. I'm thinking you guys will judge the doors, like, most classic, festive and creative.
Door like on?
Yeah, so I'm gonna tell like the library, the highway, everybody in town hall, fire station, community center. Um, and whoever wants to decorate their door. Give a date and you guys can come by and.
I think it'd be fun.
What if we, what if we do it, but is there any way, I mean, if Highway wins, what if?
I was gonna do twenty five dollar gift cards to the bagel company so that they could just buy.
Bagels and cotton.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm not opposed entirely, it just seems weird that they always, it seems like they count. Or whoever's always saying, we can't donate money, we can't.
Well, so he actually wrote it down, I think, this is from the DLS, um, that we may spend reasonable amounts on retirement gifts, plaques, merit service payments and other similar awards municipal employees such that the public welcomes, sorry, such that the public welfare will be enhanced or the loyalty and productivity of other employees will be promoted.
I, I, that's the first time I've heard it, I've only heard it once, I haven't looked at it. But I read that as when you have a police chief or dyer for twenty years.
Well, it was two. Right, such that or the loyalty and productivity of the other employees will be promoted. Kind of broken up, I'll send you this if you'd like.
I mean, and if they're, if they're getting a gift card for something that benefits the, the staff in that moment, like, you're not talking about a huge amount of money, like, if they're, even if they're buying lunch or buying bagels or or buying a cake or whatever, like. I like it.
Do it.
Okay.
Um.
I'll just, I'll run you guys maybe like the dates of when I should have people.
I'm out, I'm pretty big with December, I'll do this.
Do you think like the mid-December, like, have you guys judged? Yeah, that works, cool.
Do we, do we need to talk about when we're meeting in December?
Oh, yeah, right.
Do we have a date for our meeting?
Well, usually you guys don't meet around the holidays, it does get pretty, um, dead.
Christmas is on the twenty fifth. Uh, yeah, so I really don't want Christmas.
New Year's is on the first.
Interestingly, the twenty sixth is actually grayed out, which I'm guessing means that oh, maybe that's been like a Canada holiday, yeah, Boxing Day in Canada, I'm like, but is this me? Like, whatever. Anyway, I, I mean, I'm all for not meeting the twenty sixth.
And the second.
Um, and second, yeah, that would give us a, you know, a three week gap, but.
We can always throw a meeting in, um,
If something.
Later on in that week, if we needed to, like, the twenty eighth.
True.
But why don't we just plan on no meeting on the twenty sixth and second?
Yeah.
Um.
Well, it's ongoing, seven through eleven, December. Cause I tell you, we'll be, a bunch of meetings will come out soon.
Yeah, cause I, I'm gonna send that notice out tomorrow, well, actually, do you guys have a rough figure for me? I know the finance committee's meeting tonight, it's probably gonna talk about COLA, if they agree to that.
Are they meeting right now?
They're meeting right now.
Why don't we just call them?
Uh, something tells me they're probably not still meeting, they started at six.
So good, then.
So, yeah, so call, uh, call Roger and ask if they.
Does anybody have?
I'll, I'll call you.
Melissa, did you hear that Stanford Field lost their police chief, fire chief from the Department of Commerce?
So I heard that that wasn't true, the, the Eagle talked about the, the fire, the police chief. The fire chief did resign.
Right.
They, the article originally said, the Sandersfield Times said that they were gonna fire the police chief that yesterday. But the Eagle posted something saying that that was not true. And the select board apologized for that getting out there and the Highway Superintendent did live.
Yeah.
Completely unrelated to each other, but. Find it, yes.
So they're really sure of Highway, cause they have a position for a former.
Three positions.
Yeah.
We think there's two people there right now.
Hi, Roger, it's, it's Justin. I'm just, I'm actually at the select board meeting and I'm gonna put you on speakerphone with the whole select board, if that's okay? I just want, we wanna see if there's any updates on COLA.
Just had a conversation, um, Mizuki is on now?
Yes, we're, everyone can hear you now.
Yeah, well, um, we had a conversation today, we had a meeting and, um, uh, we had talked about doing it, uh, I think I mean was gonna send something to you guys, but it was, uh, um, suggested four percent, so that was our, that was our conversation.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, was Jeff there as well or is he still out?
Yes, no, Jeff was there as well.
Okay.
He was in by phone, he was in by demo, I think.
Yeah, yeah, we were, we were all remote, so. No, we had just a conversation, we had a conversation about that, but kinda went through the math a little bit, looked at the, uh, what that would amount to over like the one point one million dollar budget, uh, the, uh, payroll budget, I guess that's what it was. And, uh, we looked at four percent when the, that does have the recommendation that we're having. As long, cause I think that was more than it was last year.
Yeah, last year was three point eight.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay, well, thank you for the update, Roger, the only, the only reason I call is just because we are meeting right now and if we can and, and I know I mean would have updated us eventually, but.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, how's that work with you guys, you guys having a conversation about it right now or?
We are, yeah.
Okay, all right, good.
Roger, can you, um, I know that the CPI and the social security both came in at three point two. Um, what, what else did you factor in to do the four?
Um, I think they were just, uh, you know, they just kinda looked at that three point two and then, uh, we looked at that, we looked at that three point two and then we just sort of thought what would, uh, I don't necessarily, we didn't necessarily factor in anything else in, I don't, so I'm thinking my conversation, I was a little late to the conversation, I was a little late getting to the meeting. And they, they actually had an issue, someone hacked into the meeting, so they had to start over again and, uh, but, um, yeah, I don't think we necessarily, um, added anything, you know, thought about anything specific into it other than than, um, you know, three point two was what the CPI, social security was and then three point eight last year, thought it would be good to have a little bit, you know, more than last year just because we've had conversations about keeping people on and trying to give them, you know, some, uh, you know, some incentive to stick around and since we don't really have, uh, you know, a, a stepping grade, a graded step type of situation here.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Roger.
All right, thank you, Roger. Have a good Thanksgiving.
You too.
Good night, bye.
We don't have a central health there, we'll be doing.
When I met with her, she said it could be anywhere from two to ten percent increase, we won't know until, but, but I will tell you that we are always on the low end of their, their range.
Well, we have a young workforce.
And, and we don't put in that many claims, so we stay rather, um.
But.
It, so, to some degree, this seems really arbitrary. I, and I don't know if any other towns do just stick to rates prepared by other, by CPI or the consumer price index or the social security rate. And because it's, it feels very, it feels arbitrary, I mean, I don't, I feel like, I, I feel like this every year that we make this decision.
I, I'm not gonna disagree with you, I mean, the CPI gives a, gives you some sense of what prices are doing. But it, it's national, so it's not, right, it's not regional. Um, and prices aren't, like, look at gas prices, Texas versus here, they're not the same, right? They are not the same. So I don't, like, it doesn't necessarily give you perspective on exactly what the prices are doing, where you live, whether it's housing, food, gas, whatever. Um, that said, we also have the opportunity to, because we are doing reviews, to separate out, um, a COLA adjustment and a performance reward of some kind if we wanted to. And I'm not saying we have to, I, and I don't know, I mean, I could see it being problematic in some cases.
It's gotta be thought through, I'm not.
Right. Exactly.
I think, um. Because we have been doing some salary and compensation reviews in the past couple of years and we could be more consistent and we could rely on our new human resources consultant to do that. Um, we had at one point used COLA as kind of raises for everyone and I don't know that we need to do that anymore.
And I don't think there's anything wrong with using COLA as a way to give raises. Exactly.
I don't think you can ignore it, I don't think you have to adopt it, though, I think it's rough. Three point two, you know, that's your starting, you know? You know, and then you look at like, oh, okay, healthcare's gonna stay flat, maybe do a little more, but healthcare's more than ten percent, maybe stick on COLA, it's, um, you know, so.
This, the other point being, if we agree with the four percent, and this is as a preliminary number, then we can just go ahead and departments can prepare their budgets and we can have the number out there, if we disagree, we have to go back.
But I think what you say is, let's start at four percent, but you gotta put a clause in there, you know, healthcare comes in really high or if we see something else, we're gonna adjust it down. Okay, so they shouldn't go broadcast it, but, you know, we have the right to change it, well, it's, you know, it's hard to, you know, you don't see the whole budget, you don't.
It's early days.
It's early days, but I think, you know, is it fair to start at that number, I think so, but I think it's also gotta be saying, you know, like I just said, if healthcare comes at eight percent, we can adjust it down.
So four percent, but, um, it may change as we get.
Well, we get, we get all our numbers, I mean, you know, we're supposed to hear about free cash, I mean, there's a lot of them in parts.
So why don't we, uh, ask Melissa, please, um, the way that I would word it, cause this is gonna be an email to all the departments, something like, please use a figure of four percent uh, as a preliminary cost of living adjustment, this number, and we should be upfront, this number is subject to change depending on.
And what the remaining, what all the budget looks like.
What did, what the entire.
Here are the things, I mean, we just have to get more information, but you have to start somewhere.
Yep, well, other years, we've left it undecided and so it is good to start somewhere.
I think you have to start somewhere and get that, and what happens if, if something happens.
Okay, great.
Do we wanna put on our list of to-dos to consider whether we want to, um, create a structure for the possibility of salary adjustments based on performance?
Like steps and.
Pardon?
Like steps and.
And I don't, I don't know.
No, we, we used to call it merit raise, you know, and you had a different level, you know, we did that.
I think that.
But you have to, you have to think it through, I mean, you gotta have, you know, um.
But we, but exactly that, we need to put it on our list of things to actually address, not right in the middle of budgets, which is why. Exactly.
I think it's good because, you know, people, in my, my experience of work.
So about what merit raises, is that the right phrase or pay merit?
Yeah, you need to have a policy.
Exceptional performance should come with a reward.
Okay.
Besides just a pound on your back.
I'll put it on under human resources. And I think, you know, obviously, the first step would just be ask, uh, Mary.
Yeah. I mean, ultimately, I think the three components of a raise system should be like keep cost of living competitiveness because it's not necessarily the same thing, right? Because competitive factors in what's going on in the hiring market as well as.
They have low inflation, but the
But. But competitive hire department, yep.
You know, everybody's fully employed and everything like that, so you know, inflation would be, COLA would be at one point three.
But.
You gotta go four percent and just be keeping on the door.
So I, I would say the three components that I would see in the thinking package would be a COLA piece, a competitiveness piece and an exceptional performance piece. Because recognizing people who do outstanding work seems like this, this is where culture says, your, your reward is money. So I, I don't personally think that because I do it for the work, but I think that that's the, you know, one way we have of recognizing it and anyway. Okay.
Okay, is there any other unanticipated business? Uh, the board agreed by general consensus to use the COLA four percent, just to be clear.
Yes. Uh, I will give you a little update that we had twenty one people show up for the forum last week for the open space, which I thought was, we all thought was pretty good, we were, we were thinking it'd be like four people, so, um, and, um, they, they had some cool ideas, a, a lot of people really liked them and a bunch of them were not people who had been to the master plan, so it was interesting to see that it was a never proof. And, um, they had some good ideas, we're going forward to feed into the survey, but, um, we also did a little recruiting work to try to get a few more people to be involved in town, just so. Um, and that's, that's all, this little update, but I thought you might wanna know. Um.
Well, the other thing is, I know there's been talk with stipends, the fire departments been the same for years, um, I mean, is that something we're gonna look at?
Can't, I, I'd have to step out for that discussion, yeah.
I think it might be part of the new proposal.
Coming for the party, okay.
But we gotta look at all of those numbers.
That is actually a really good reason I've always stayed out of the contract, negotiate the lease agreement then, because if that really is gonna be part of it, then I'd absolutely.
Well, the conversation.
Yeah, I think those are separate ones. I, I, you don't usually consider people, what, you're paying people in a lease agreement.
Sharing a lot with me, so.
Any other business ready to adjourn?
Oh, my God, seven thirty?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We'll vote.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, unanimous, meeting adjourned at seven thirty PM.